Adrianne Brightfelder, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, June 20, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on speed study data.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for June 20, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprang.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is speed study data related to automated speed enforcement recommendations. I will turn it over to Police Chief Jeremy Jensen.
Let the record show that Mr. Resnick is here. Welcome, Mr. Resnick. We're glad to have you.
Good evening. Jeremy Jensen, Chief of Police. So, I'm not going to do much talking tonight, for once, on this topic, but I'm going to let the data people talk. So, back in March, when I presented on this, you all asked for more information, particularly about research and about data. So, the Engineering Department has spent the spring doing some speed studies, and they will present that here. And then, Abishak from the City Manager's Office will be presenting on some of the research he's done on automated enforcement systems. So, with that, I'm going to step back and let Abishak come up and start the presentation.
Thank you, Jeremy. This is Abishak, ICMM Management Fellow from the City Manager's Office. So, we started looking at some of the national studies first. Not first, but my focus was more on the national studies. And I looked at the study published by the National Transportation Safety Board. This is with the name "Safety Study Reducing Speeding-Related Crashes Involving Passenger Vehicles." And this was one of the major studies published with the focus on speeding and how it affects fatalities. And we had some great data points, which the researchers highlighted in this research. And this was published in 2017, but they started studying it in 2015. So, they studied it for two years and published it after a period of two years, in which they conducted a review of existing literature and interviewed several stakeholders, including employees from various government bodies and law enforcement agencies. And they interviewed a lot of people, and they also looked at several studies. They also analyzed data from two national databases published by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. This included the FARSS data, which is the census of all crashes in the United States. Not only crashes, but this is a census of related transportation safety. And the research analyzed speeding-related fatalities from 2005 to 2014. So, when they started, 2014 was the latest data point. And year over year, if you see the table on the left-hand side, it's 30% of, on average, 30% of all accidents or speeding-related fatalities in the United States were due to, they were speeding-related fatalities out of all fatalities in the U.S. And I also included the 2021 number. Now, this was published by the IIHS, which is the Insurance Institute of Highway Safety. And in 2021, a total of 12,330 deaths, which is also 29% of all motor vehicle accidents occurred, were speeding-related crashes. So, just to show consistency, and IIHS also used the same database published by the FARSS, not FARSS, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. So, moving on. But they also analyzed and looked at several characteristics of what happened, like why these accidents happened, and some of the characteristics, which I'll be going into more detail. And the NTSB researchers found focused on fatal crashes in 2014. So, they looked specifically on the 2014 data, the latest data they had, and they looked at these characteristics in detail. So, in, for example, in 2014, 8,393 speeding vehicles were involved in fatal crashes. So, this is more on the details of how many crashes happened. And of these speeding vehicles, 77% were passenger vehicles. And this study is focused on the speeding passenger vehicle and fatality rates. They were involved in 6,369 fatal crashes, and these resulted in 7,223 speeding passenger vehicle-related fatalities. Now, this is something which we'll keep coming back to, because these numbers will change, not change, but it's sometimes it's six, some of the tables in the next few slides might add up to 6,422, while some might be 6,369, because sometimes they are looking at the number of crashes, while sometimes they are looking at fatalities. So, that's why I just laid it out before going into that. So, one of the first characteristics, which they touched upon, was injury severity. So, this chart on screen is the percentage of vehicle occupants with serious or fatal injury in single-vehicle crash. So, looking at the rate at which fatalities or serious injuries takes place at different speeds, at the bottom over here. So, even at the same speed, they found out that the chance of, the percentage of fatalities or serious injuries is almost double when the passenger is speeding over the speed limit versus if it's in the speed lim, if it's traveling at the same speed, but it's on a road which is built for that kind of speeds. So, for example, going 61 and over, if it's not speeding, it's 4.3%, which is the percentage for fatality or serious injuries, while 9.8% when it's speeding over the speed limit. And it's consistently, here, it's 2.3% to 4.4% and 1.6% to 2.5%. So, this is constantly at a double rate, they found out that it's, when it's above the speed limit, the injury rate almost doubles. They also explored the road type and land use. They explored the relationship of fatal accidents. And this numbers, these percentages in this table might not add up to 100, and they might look a bit odd, but it's actually the total number of fatal accidents, fatal speeding-related accidents on these type of roads out of the all fatal accidents, which is a different table. And they found out that 24.4% of all accidents, of fatal crashes, involved speeding passenger vehicles. And this was higher, if you look on all the category, this was, the highest category was local roads on the roadside, which is higher than interstates, other principal arterial, minor arterial, collector roads, at 30%. And the biggest number on this table is 35%. And so, local roads had the largest percentage, and local rural roads had the highest rate, where 35% of fatal crashes on rural local roads involved speeding passenger vehicles. Moving on to the speeds at which these accidents took place and the urban-rural split. So, most rural accidents in that year took place at speeds of 55 to 60 mile per hour on the rural side, while the highest category on the urban side was 35 to 40. So, this was a very detailed study, and I just wanted to highlight some of the data the researchers found out in this study. They also explored some of the other characteristics, like alcohol impairment and age, which relates to fatal crashes in passenger vehicles, related to passenger vehicles. And the NTSB examined alcohol impairment for almost, over 6,400 speeding passenger vehicles. And they just found out that only 43% were alcohol impaired, while 57% were non-alcohol impaired. And they also concluded that just solving, addressing alcohol impairment would not alleviate the risks of speeding, especially when it comes to fatality in passenger vehicles. And they also explored age. And the three groups with most speeding passenger vehicle were ages under 20, 20- to 24-year-olds, and 20- to 25- to 29-year-olds, the younger age groups. And these three groups include 3,167 drivers for the 2014, representing 50% of all speeding passenger vehicle drivers in fatal crashes. So, this is, just they wanted to explore the relationship with age, and they found out younger age groups were more affected by speeding-related fatalities and injuries. We also looked, I also looked at the U.S. Department of Transportation, and they have this safe systems approach, where US DOT adapts a safe system approach as a guiding paradigm to addressing roadway safety. And the safe system approach has been embraced by transportation community as an effective way to address and mitigate the risks. And the wheel represents the objectives they have, which includes all sorts of risks related to road safety. And safer speeds is a separate category in itself, besides other categories, which their objective is to make it safe. So, this was also one of the interesting other resource we looked at. This is how the effects of speed roadway are described on their website, and this is more related to pedestrian safety. For example, they have provided this diagram, this is their, just a screenshot from their website, and we can look at the description, but they have provided this diagram of speeding and its risks to pedestrians, and this is risk of death. So, for example, if there's an accident at 58 miles per hour, there's a, not miles, miles, yeah, miles per hour, there's a 90% risk of death or fatality, and 75% at 50 miles per hour. And this is interesting, and it goes down as the risk, as the speed goes down. So, besides these national studies, we also looked at some of the data specific to the city of Dubuque. And I'll invite Justine, which is our traffic, who is a traffic engineer, to discuss some of this data.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Hi, I am Justine. I am one of the engineers with the city that is going to help present with the data this evening. So, this traffic data is kind of what Jeremy Johnson said in the beginning. It took us a couple months to get all this data collected. In this picture, I show a wonderful counter that I use daily. This goes on top of the roadway. So, this is also in conjunction with cameras that we can use. I use this mainly for areas that I can't see, or if I kind of just want a quick and easy, you know, something to throw out on the road for a good 48 hours. So, that is normally requested, or can be requested, through a citizen saying, you know, hey, I have a speeder through here, or, you know, I would just like to request, maybe I want my speed limit changed to, you know, 20 miles an hour, which sometimes can't happen, but, or something that they just want us to look at and verify that this is a speeding issue through town. If that is the case, then I do kind of help them through the process of, okay, I can talk to the police department and get a speed shield up and figure out if we can really do some changes here with the speed limit, or some sort of other traffic calming situation. But we use those for, you know, speed studies or developments as well. So, we will take the data that is collected and give those to developers and say, you know, this is what we have, this is what we collected, this is the dates that we have, and everything like that, and just give them that information, or help them collect that information as well. Like I said, with the cameras, we can export that data and give them the opportunity to look at that themselves. And that also helps with warrants as well. So, if we have a right turn lane that needs to be implemented, or maybe a street does have a very high traffic volume, that needs to be recorded, and that can be done by placing this counter out for 48 hours. We can do up to a week. It does get a little bit refined data if we do up to a week. We're really just looking for this annual average daily traffic number. So, that tells us, you know, hey, there's 4,000 vehicles going this direction and 4,000 vehicles going the other direction. So, that's a total of 8,000 vehicles on that street. So, that data can be widely used. We have 19 various locations here throughout the city that we kind of randomly chose. Troy Kress and Engineering Tech and I are the main implementers of these traffic counters. So, the data that we collected is from this study, and recent studies that we've had in the past, I would say, five years as well, just sprinkling that in there for different locations. So, I will have Gus Sahoyas explain that data for us. Thank you.
Gus Sahoyas, City Engineer. I want to thank Justine Hall and Troy Kress for collecting all this data. Again, Justine mentioned we're going to present on 19 locations, talk about the posted speeds. And so, those 19 locations, there's really 38 data sets that we have. They're eastbound, westbound, northbound, southbound. So, I'll present a little bit on that. I'll probably go through the first three or four, five or six slowly, and we can look at the data and comprehend it. And then, as we go on through the data, you could see that, I'll just probably just talk about how, what the percentage over on those particular is. So, we'll talk about average daily counts on all these roadway sections that we collected data, and then we'll put them in bins. So, let's think real carefully. So, if the speed limit's 25, we're going to talk about everybody going 36 to 40, and then 41 to 45, and so on. So, we're talking anybody that's going 11 miles an hour or over tonight. We're not talking anybody that's going, like, 25 to 35. We're talking about everybody over. So, remember, when we present these numbers, it's at least 11 miles over the speed limit. So, here we go. Okay, so, the first data set is on the northwest arterial between JFK Road and Central Avenue. So, the upper left, we're going to talk about both directions. The light blue will be southbound, it'll be southbound. The traffic southbound in that particular place is 3,430 vehicles. Now, this is the one's probably the most startling, and we just presented, you know, through the town. So, it's coincidental, but 1,746 people or vehicles are going at least 11 miles over the speed limit. So, that equates to 50.9% are going at least 11 miles over the speed limit. And so, Justine, she used the computer to put them in different bins, we call them, and the bins will be 11 to 15, 16 to 20, 21 to 25, and 26 to 30, and then over 31. So, in that case, we're talking about people going at least 81 miles over the speed limit. So, it's pretty significant, I mean, not 31 miles over the speed limit, which is 81 miles. So, northbound, we'll go through the first thing, the purple line, 940 people are going 11 to 15. Everybody see that? Okay. So, then 16 to 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, 225, and then so forth, 56, 20, and then seven people, the computer registered, are going at least 31 miles over the speed limit. So, that's the 37.0. So, that's one data set out of the 19. Okay, the next place that we'll talk about is Prairie Road. And northbound, 355 are going 11 to 15 miles over the speed limit, 82, 16 to 20. And then, at the very end, you can see 16 people are going 31 miles over the speed limit, and the speed limit there is 30, so they're going 61 miles an hour. So, 16 people are going at least 61 miles an hour in that location, going northbound. And then, again, we're taking a look at the blue line. It's southbound, the traffic in that area was 3,426 vehicles that particular day, 455 are going over 10 miles an hour. That's the 369, the 68, the 14, the 6, and the 7, for 13.3% are going over the 10 mile an hour threshold, or 11 mile an hour threshold. Okay, 32nd Street at Tiffany Court. We did this one for Switch Homes, just to look at the speed limit in that area. And eastbound, we have 40.7% are going at least 11 miles over the speed limit. So, you can see that in just one day, between 11 and 15 miles over, speed limit, 398 vehicles are going over the speed limit in that particular bin, 11 to 15, for a total of 668 vehicles out of the 16, 39 are going over the 10 miles an hour. So, these are significant data points, 40, and then you can see the other direction, westbound, we got 30.4%. Again, I keep on saying that again, are going at least 11 miles over the speed limit. So, significant data that we've accumulated the last couple months. Okay, northwest arterial, we plead between Plaza Drive and JFK. Southbound, 3,873 people are, we detected, 733 are going over the speed limit or the threshold. And then, northbound, we got 3,706 vehicles and 662. So, you can see it's pretty consistent, 17.9 and 18.9 in each direction are going over that threshold. Central Avenue, now, this wasn't as bad. Central Avenue between 24th and 25th Street. Northbound, we had 6,000 vehicles, 6,007 to 64 are going over the speed limit, over that threshold. So, that's only 4.4%, but still a lot, 264 people are going over the speed limit. It's 25 miles an hour, so that's significant. And then, southbound in that area, we had 6,693 vehicles, 795 at least 11 miles over the speed limit, and that is 11.7%. So, Ronberg Avenue between Humboldt and Schiller Street. Northbound, we had 4.8%. Southbound, we had 1.3. So, only 34 people are going over the speed limit in the southbound direction that day. Grandview Avenue between Aspen Drive and North Grandview area. Northbound, we had 2,719 vehicles, 216 were going over the threshold. And southbound, we had 2,515, we have 282 going over the threshold. So, 9.6 and 11.2% are going over that threshold in that particular spot, the day that we measured that traffic. Asbury Road between Harvest View and Matthews, Matthews John Drive. So, we have eastbound, we had 8329, 354 going over the threshold. In the other direction, westbound, we had 8854 and 253. So, 2.9 and 4.3%, not as bad as other locations. But the speed limit here is 35, so you have to stop and think about that, they're going 46 miles an hour. And we did have quite a few going 30 miles an hour over the speed limit. So, at some time during the day, we got people going 30 plus 35, so we got 65 miles an hour in those particular areas. So, it's significant when you see, when you start looking at the upper limits of the bins that we've accumulated the data. Clark Drive between Clark Crest and Woodworth Street, eastbound and westbound directions. The eastbound direction, we have 42.2% and 37.8%. So, a lot of people are speeding, Mike Van Milligan's area looks like. So, that's pretty significant. Loris Boulevard between Booth Street and Glen Oak Street, eastbound, westbound directions, we got eastbound 3.3% and westbound 11.0%. So, still in the eastbound direction, 116, in the 11 to 15 mile an hour area are going over the threshold, and then 286 for the westbound. So, again, 3.3 and 11% on Loris Boulevard. Pennsylvania Avenue between Lenox and Illinois Street. Westbound, 4,500 vehicles a day, 130 were going over the speed limit. And the other direction, eastbound, 4,538, and 614 were going over the speed limit. So, we go from 2.9 to 13.5%. I remember probably 30, 40 years ago, there always used to be vehicle, or police presence in that area, and nobody sped on Pennsylvania at all. Do you remember that? I do, because everybody went slow on Pennsylvania, but there was always a squad car on Pennsylvania Avenue. Okay, northwest arterial between Asbury Road and Pennsylvania. The speed limit here in this area is 50 miles an hour, and these are some pretty significant results. We've got 29.9% and 27.7% are going over the threshold. So, southbound, we have 4,000 again, 34, and 1,116 people are going over the threshold. And the northbound direction, we have 3,512, and 1,050 are going over that threshold. And if you start looking at the bins, you know, most of them are in that 11 to 15, but then we still do have a few that are going 30 miles an hour over the speed limit. So, and significant results on northwest arterial. Chevigny Road at Indivation, 2,510 vehicles going eastbound. We have 584 going over the threshold, which is 23.3%. And westbound, 1,669 vehicles and 198 vehicles, so 10% are going over the speed limit here. Crescent Ridge, at 3,651 Crescent Ridge, so speed limit in this area is 25 miles an hour. And you can see from the results, 40.1% are going over the threshold. Going eastbound and westbound, we have 21.7. I think that's pretty significant. I know there's a lot of speeders in that area. We have a lot of complaints in that particular area. South Grandview, south of Plymouth Court. Speed limit on Grandview here is 25 miles an hour. And northbound, we have 9% going over the threshold and 13.3% going southbound. So, 605 and, so 1,000 vehicles in this particular area are going over the speed limit a particular Cedar Cross Road at 1095 Cedar Cross Road. Speed limit at this location is 35 miles an hour. 8.2% eastbound are going over the speed limit or threshold, and 18.9% are going over the speed limit in the westbound direction. So, Kelly Lane between Edwards and Kelly Heights, the counts in that particular speed limit there is 25 miles an hour. And northbound, we have 2,945. We got 1,088 going over this threshold, that's just 36.9%. And southbound, we have 6,265 vehicles, and we counted 1,113 are going at least 11 miles an hour or more over the speed limit. I know that's one that we've always had complaints with on Kelly Lane, speed. I know that's one that we've always had complaints with on Kelly Lane, speeders in that area. North Cascade Road, um, speed limit in that area is a le- thirty-five miles an hour eastbound and westbound. Um, eastbound is really high at forty point five percent are going over the speed limit, and eleven point two in the westbound are going over the speed limit. Rockdale Road at twenty-five fifty, the speed limit in that area is twenty-five miles an hour, and, um, northbound, forty-six point five percent are going over the threshold, and sixteen point nine percent in the southbound are going over the threshold. So in that area, we got, uh, sixty-six hundred cars or so, and it looks like we got some speeding issues in that area. Okay, so citywide, so the nineteen spots we collected data, or we've collected a lot more data, we just presented, and we didn't cherry pick this by any stretch, I said, that's enough, I know you guys are gonna get bored looking at all these numbers, we have a lot more data we could have presented on tonight, but just on those vehicle counts, so the thresholds, let's just look at that. So we have a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and three cars, we counted for those particular days, we just added them all up, and said, how many cars did we count in those nineteen locations? Thirty-eight different dir- spots, so each direction, either northbound, southbound, westbound, eastbound. So sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-five are going at least eleven to fifteen miles over the posted speed limit. And then we can read down sixteen to twenty, four thousand ninety-one cars are going over the speed limit, and those bins that, that been there, sixteen to twenty, and twelve hundred and thirty-three are going twenty-one to twenty-five, twenty-six to thirty-five, twenty-six, and then we have eleven hundred and thirty-eight are going at least thirty-one miles over the posted speed limit. So if you look at the counts again, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and three vehicles we counted, or Justine counted and Troy, and going over the threshold, twenty-two thousand, four thirty-two are going at least eleven miles over the, the thr- the speed limit. So that equates to sixteen point eight percent of the vehicles that we counted for those days are going over the supposed speed limit. So it's one out of six. So you could just say one out of six. That's the way I looked at it. So, that's what I have to present on the data, and anybody wanna, wanna finish it up? Okay, thanks. The B. Schick's gonna finish it up.
Thank you, Gus. We also looked at some of the national studies and what it said, uh, what it concluded about, uh, the automated speed cameras or automated speed enforcement systems, and how they're implemented, uh, across the United States, and even some of the studies which were international. So, looking at that, uh, so the National Highway Tra- Traffic Safety Administration, uh, publishes a new edition of this guide every two and a half years, which is known as Counter Measures That Work. This guide is a basic reference to assist state highway safety offices select effective science-based traffic safety countermeasures for major, uh, highway safety problems, mostly intended for, uh, state agencies to, to help them select, um, and make new solutions for making, uh, traffic safe. And from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty, uh, multiple editions of the study have identified automated, uh, speed enforcement as, uh, as one of the most effective, uh, countermeasures for, uh, speed safety grading. So they grade, uh, different measures, including, uh, the automated speed enforcement out of a, uh, they give, out of, they give five stars to the most effective gradings, uh, the most effective measures. Uh, and besides, uh, besides, uh, speed, automated speed enforcement, only speed limits have the five-star gradings, and then there are others with, then, there are others with four, three, and, uh, lower gradings. Coming back to the National Transportation Safety Board's study on passenger vehicle, uh, it described, uh, ASC as a data-driven, technology-based solution for speed enforcement in addition to other data-driven approaches for in-person speed enforcement. And I could find some parallels with our creating an equitable community of choice statement of creating a high-performing community that's data-driven, um, as well as, uh, currently there are one eighty-three U.S. communities that use ASC systems. Um, this is pu- this is published again by the IHS, uh, which I have provided a link, uh, at the end of this presentation. The NTSB also looked at some of the existing, uh, studies and of, uh, of the effectiveness of the ASC cameras. So there were, these were the three which were the most latest ones, or, um, so in two thousand and seven, NH TSA published a review of thirteen studies of ASC programs, which included one program in the United States, uh, and they found out that four out of the thirteen studies, uh, which examined fixed ASC programs, and generally found that injury crashes at fixed ASC locations declined between twenty to twenty-five percent after ASC implementation. Um, the other nine studies examined mobile ASC programs and found that injury crashes in mobile ASC zones declined between twenty-one and twen- fifty-one percent. So they, all these studies, thirteen studies in two thousand and seven showed, uh, decrease, uh, with injury crashes, uh, for both, uh, mobile ASC zones and fixed ASC programs. In, in twenty-ten, there, uh, there was a review of twenty-eight studies of ASC, uh, automated speed enforcement in the United States, Canada, Europe, Australia, and New Zealand, determined that all twenty-eight studies have found fewer crashes in ASC areas after the implementation of these programs. Uh, these studies reported reducing reduction of eight percent to forty-nine percent for all crashes, and reduction of eleven percent to forty-four percent for crashes causing serious injuries or fatalities. Now, these were some of the older studies, but most recently, in twenty-fifteen, the IHS, which is the Insurance, uh, Institute for Insurance and Highway Safety, uh, published a study of ASC programs in Mon- Montgomery County, Maryland, which began, the program began in two thousand and seven, and they concluded, they found that seven and a half years after the program began, ASC was associated with a ten percent reduction in speed, in mean speeds, and a sixty-two percent reduction in the likelihood of speeding more than ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit at ASC sites. The likelihood that a crash involved in incapacitating injury or fatality decreased by thirty-nine percent on ASC-eligible roads, and the corridor approach further reduced this likelihood by thirty percent compared to what would have happened. So basically, they found, uh, ten, uh, they found reduction in, uh, speeding as well as fatality, uh, injury, uh, crashes which involved fatalities or, uh, incapacitating injury. And finally, uh, uh, also they included the, the likelihood that a crash, uh, was speeding later decreased by eight percent. They also found that ASC ineligible roads, so these were the roads where ASC was not implemented, uh, in the county, the likelihood that a crash involved an incapacitating injury or fatality decreased by twenty-seven percent on ineligible roads, and, uh, that a crash was rela- speeding-related decreased by twenty-two percent. So not only the, the, the fatality, uh, the speeding reduce, but also, uh, crashes with fatality related to speeding decreased, and this demonstrated a positive spillover effect in which the benefits of ASC, uh, was expanded beyond those implemented sites. And finally, uh, the Center for Disease Con- uh, this was very interesting, which I found out, the CDC, uh, Center for Disease Control and Prevention, uh, notes that ASC can reduce crashes substantially, and includes, uh, ASC as the only speeding-related countermeasures in their motor vehicle prioritizing interventions and cost calculator for states. Now, this is an online tool for states to choose cost-effective interventions to prevent motor vehicle-related casualties. We, uh, so this is their, uh, they have fourteen interventions for reducing, uh, motor vehicle-related casualties, and this is what, uh, included, this is part of that invent, uh, those countermeasures also, and this is the only countermeasures which is related to speeding-related fatal, um, crashes and casual, casualties. So these are some of the links, I talked about, uh, IHS, and, um, I think we can open up for questions.
Okay, thank you all very much. Let's, uh, open up for questions and discussion, please. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Beer, thank you very much. Uh, so Gus, could you tell me, uh, how many accidents there were on the, on the days that you were, uh, getting these statistics?
Gus Ahoy, a city engineer, no, I can't, but we can get him for you.
I mean, because we're, we're relating speed to accidents, and so I would think that that would be good, because from what the figures are, which we just got today, which we're not able to go over, so this is a guess, it looks like we would have collected two million dollars just in the data that you gave us. So it's curious, and a twenty-eight percent reduction that the National Transportation Safety Board is talking about, and transportation, if it, if there were no, if there were no accidents during this time, uh, you know, those kind of statistics, I'm, I'm kind of surprised, but what's the enforcement level? Did you see, were there any, was there any enforcement? Was there a, a squad car even parked on the side of the road for this?
No. No, a- as Justine pointed out, these are, uh, computer chips that we put in the pavement, they're taped down, so they're incognito, nobody knows that we're counting, unless you know that there's a chip there.
But you mentioned that on Pennsylvania, just the presence of a squad car, I'm still looking at that, at Flora Park whenever I drive by, you know, I'm still looking, like you mentioned that, there's a reputation for, uh, police officer there.
There is.
So with the data that-
That's why I brought that up, yep.
Yeah. With the data that you gather, gathered, what traffic calming activities do you recommend?
We haven't looked at it in traffic calming measures at all, particularly like the northwest arterial, um, traffic cameras, speed, um, speed shields, where they actually tell you the speed, um, that might be, um, something we could look at, but what, what we're presenting, engineers presenting tonight is strictly the counts and the people that are going over that threshold.
Okay, thank you.
We just wanted to present that, one out of six vehicles that we measured, out of the hundred and thirty-three thousand cars are going over the threshold.
Absolutely. So the Institute of Transportation Engineers has nineteen different, uh, methods. Uh, a couple of questions about what was presented. Speed-related, what does that, what does that mean? Uh, does that mean that speed is one of the many aspects, like, along with driver distraction, the age of the driver, or is it a primary cause? What is speed-related? You, you mentioned, sir, twenty-nine percent, what is, are speed-related?
So this was discussed, uh, this was defined in the methodology of the study, where FARs, this is based on the FARs, fatality- Fatality Analysis Reporting System, where these were accidents where the, the passenger vehicles were going either over the speed limit, or they were going a sp- at a speed limit which was, uh, not expected for that road. So these were accidents, um, which were having, involved a speeding vehicle. Now, there can be other factors involved, um, like alcohol impairment, we explored, or the type of roads, but speeding was a factor, the common factor in all of these accidents.
All right, thank you. Um, so I have a question for the chief, if you don't mind. I, I, I was looking through this presentation, and what, what I got was, is reckless driving safe? No. Is driving way too fast safe? No. Do ticket cameras make things safer? Maybe, and sometimes. Uh, that's what, that's what we give for the Iowa camera data that I've been looking at. Um, but chief, now you, you mentioned that you actually were a traffic cop, as they say, and did you ever, um, let somebody go with a warning?
Sure.
And what were some of the reasons?
Well, you know, what you, when you talk about that, this is part of that bias, right? That they talk about with speed cameras versus not with the officer, and, and is there a bias that the officer has? Does every officer have a soft spot for something? We're all different. Um, to answer your question, yeah, I, I've let people go, I've had people with reasons that they've done that. Uh, but for the most part, you know, the reasons, you know, define what that is. Um, is there a reason to go thirty-one miles an hour over the speed limit? Probably not. That, that's unsafe, you know, as, as they pointed out there. But is there a way that I need to give them a ticket to slow them down? I don't know, and that depended on the situation.
Right, and, and so, you know, it's just talking to you, and they were just realizing that, you know, wow, you're right, that, that I was, I didn't realize it necessarily that I was going faster, but you noticed it, and you noticed that speed, as they say, speed kills, they used to say that. And, and they appreciated you, uh, stopping them, or at least they would say that, and phew, I got away with that. Um, and so I would just say that you noticed that, um, some roads feel safer. I mean, probably, I, and that's why I asked about the, the safety of that JFK, uh, be, uh, between JFK and Central, um, on the northwest arterial, being fifty miles an hour, it's, it's a pretty safe road, is what it looks like when you drive it, you know, uh, you should stay within the speed limit, I get it, it feels very safe. Uh, and so, if you're not really paying attention, it's easy to go too fast. But I appreciate your, your, the, the personal, the touch that you had, that you say that, yes, uh, would, would you, it's, it's hard, twenty-five percent of the time, maybe, you gave them a warning.
Yeah, I can't even give you a number on that, but it, it wasn't actually very high, honestly, um, with that, but, you know, there is times where I gave warnings.
So what's the enforcement level?
Mr. Resnick, if, if you don't mind, given time, can I let other people jump in, and then you can jump back in?
Thank you very much, sure.
Would that be okay? Yeah, okay. Ms. Russell.
Thank you. And I, I thought that information was really shocking, it was really not what I expected to hear, and, and it seems to me that speeding is a symptom. It's a symptom that people do not feel that speeding laws need to be obeyed, or maybe they're even not paying close attention. And so I'd like to ask a real basic question, is how do we determine our speed limits? How do we know what's a safe speed for a particular road?
Gus Ahoy, a city engineer. So what traffic engineers typically do, and, and this computer will tell you what we call is the eighty-fifth percentile. So that means that fifteen percent of the people are going over a certain speed limit. So in each one of those, um, data sets that we, um, computed, uh, data, the computer will tell us what fifteen percent are going over the speed limit. So they'll tell you that speed limit, and it might be like, if it's twenty-five, it might be, um, I'm guessing here, like thirty-six p- percent are going over, fifteen percent over the speed limit, which is the eighty-fifth percentile. And then we look at that speed and determine, it's usually right around that speed, or like five miles below that speed. Now, in residential areas, it's set at twenty-five miles an hour. So we usually look at that criteria, the eighty-fifth percentile, and we look at the safety of the road, and geometry and everything like that, and we determine speed limits. And sometimes we modify, Justine says that we get complaints, and we do get complaints in different areas of town, and we take that, uh, little computer chip, and we'll put it out in the pavement, determine the speed limit, and sometimes we raise it, sometimes we don't.
Okay, let's-
But we look at that, and traffic engineers all across the country use that eighty-fifth percentile, uh, when they determine speed limits.
Okay, well, thank you. And then I had, one other question I had was, um, those solar, or, or the radar speed signs that just can be moved around, how, how effective do you see those, um, being? I, I saw them up on North Grandview just for a couple of days, and then they were gone, I saw them up on North Grand View just for a couple of days, and then they were gone, and I just wondered how you use them and if you feel they're effective.
Yeah, they are to a degree, but North Grand View, I'll give you an example, the data on that, three days in a row, we had somebody over ninety miles an hour on that. And then when we parked up there on day four, guess what? Didn't happen. Yeah, yeah. So they are effective. You do see that. You see people braking. I think they have have some merit. They are, again, they have no enforcement ability. They all they are is just flashing a speed. So they're flashing speed sign, other than they telling you what your speed is on that. But we do see some effectiveness, but we also see some of the same stuff they're seeing with the traffic counts, and that these are some roads are higher than others, and one thing we didn't talk about is like time of day, day a week. We talked a little bit about geographical location, some of these studies, you can look at the geog. Why was eastbound and westbound different? You can look at the geographical situations of that and say, okay, I can see why one is slower than the other, just because of how it's at. So, yeah, we do see that.
Thank you.
So engineering used to just we used to manage the speed shields, and police took it over, but when we put it up historically, people would say, yeah, the week or two speeds were in check, but then as soon as we took them down, they started speeding again. That was what they they found the neighbors in those particular areas. So that's some of the stuff, just like the enforcement, when there's no enforcement, people start get a lax, and then start speeding again.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Farber. Yeah. So thank you very much for the information, and I just have some data points and some questions for Jeremy, I do believe. When you mentioned the driver distractions, do we have a database or information as to what really causes these crashes? Because I know this is about speed enforcement, but what about cell phone usage? And I noticed that the alcohol was mentioned in the National Transportation Survey. And also, in parallel to that, are there other communities in Iowa or communities our size that have speed enforcement cameras, and what are the results that they see?
Yeah. So multiparts to that. The first one being the data itself. So the data is all based upon the State Accident Reporting System. Ironically, I was just at the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau Conference this past week. One of the things they are really, the DOT, Department of Transportation, Iowa Department, is really accurate accident reporting. There's multiple things, and I think this was mentioned here, that can go into a crash. And generally, there is. It's generally not just one thing. There's a list of causations, speed being one of them. That's what we're focusing on, because that's the enforcement side of that. As far as, you know, distracted driving, very hard to enforce. We all know the cell phone stuff, right? And and that, and we've also seen the state try to do some things to make total hands-free, did not pass this year. But what other distractions? How do you regulate somebody in an argument with their kids in the backseat? That's a distraction. Eating McDonald's as you're driving down the road, loud music, there's all kinds of distractions that, quite frankly, are not enforceable. We don't have the laws on it, and quite they'd be hard to, you know? You're having a bad day, and your mind's at work. That's a distraction. Those are things that, yeah, obviously, distracted driving is very, and I think we've all kind of discussed that as part of this, not paying attention. I'm not paying attention, suddenly I'm going fifteen miles an hour over the speed limit. Yeah, and and that can be a problem. And again, there's a lot of things that go into stopping and that kind of stuff, particularly the faster you go.
So we don't have a collective databases to the differentials?
We do, we do, but I think it's what the state's saying, too, is this is not the best, because we're not seeing a true of all the different things that are going into that. And it requires, it's data in, you know, it's only good as the data in.
Garbage in, garbage out, I know that as well. What about the municipalities of our size, whether it's in Iowa or other locations? Are there data points that we could look at to determine the effectiveness of the speed enforcement?
Sure. And one of the ones that when I presented before was Cedar Rapids and their data, and they had, Davenport has has speed cameras, Waterloo has has cameras, all of these, and Des Moines, or if you're talking about agencies. But you talk about that, not all of them are speed. They also have the red light cameras, too, in a lot of these locations, so it's in conjunction with each other, and we haven't talked about that at all, obviously.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Wethel.
Just one quick question for you, chief. So as of today, I think, yeah, we're seventeen officers down on our police force. If we had seventeen more officers, would we be utilizing those individuals for traffic enforcement? I guess, how much more coverage for specific traffic enforcement do you think those individuals would provide us? For instance, stationing an officer at Flora, on Grand View, on Pennsylvania, on the arterial, what would our abilities be if we were at full force?
Yeah, and if you look at, you know, our staffing and how we place staff, and we got to look at where most bang for our buck, where can we be? You're right, we're down. And as I proposed, the reason I proposed this initially was it's a force multiplier. There is that. You saw these locations, they, so you look at twenty-four speeders over thirty-one in a forty-eight hour. I can't sit an officer there, and I don't know the exact time, twenty-four, seven, to sit there to catch that speeder. It's just not, we have over fifty thousand calls for servicing. The officers have to respond to other things. So looking at this as a way we can, particularly some of these key locations, and that's why I proposed that. Back to that, we had traffic enforcement unit, and when we started losing bodies, we collapsed that in, but officers, we are doing more traffic enforcement as the patrol shifts allow, they're putting out traffic enforcement officers, we're addressing some of these hotspots, but I'll give you like the Northwest Arterial, and they went out and worked that and said, as fast as I can turn around, I can stop people. And that's with us there, with flashing lights. So there's that. The other part is, again, even with, you look nineteen locations, just do the math on that, the twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, I don't have enough officers, we couldn't hire enough officers to do that and sit in these spots to do the enforcement, that to catch these ones. Some spots, as you saw, you could sit there in a very short period of time, other spots are, and, you know, and this doesn't count in all the one-offs, the complaints we get that, hey, hit my street, hit that, and then all the other extra tensions that we got. So it's some other speeding, there are some other traffic things, you know, engine brakes, loud mufflers, particularly loud motorcycles, we get those complaints a lot, and now we're going to get into fireworks season. So we're going to have a lot of extra tensions, a lot of time spent, which then pulls us from other things which are labor-intensive, which is traffic enforcement.
And just one more question, the I had a constituent contact me and ask me if there were sound capabilities to detect some of these, and I I'm aware that there's cameras on the market like that, but we haven't really reviewed those.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're down to three minutes. Mr. Resnick has more questions. I think we have more questions. Mike, what's the expectation here from us this evening? What are your thoughts on what we could see next?
Well, when we brought this to the council originally, you had asked for additional information. Our recommendation was implementation. Our recommendation hasn't changed any, so you just have to decide, do you have enough information where we could put it on an agenda, and you could make you could vote whether it's going to happen or not, or no, we need more information before we have that, and if you need more information, we'll try and get it for you.
So let's focus on that question. Is there more information that we, as a council, need to be able to make a better decision here, or do we expect to see this on the next agenda? Ms. Wethel.
The one thought that I had in reviewing this again, and going back and looking at my previous notes, was conversation about where the revenue would go. I continue to have a concern that we need to have that discussion before implementation. I know that it's not common, based on the ordinances I've reviewed from other cities, they don't include that within the ordinance, but I'm very, I'm wanting to utilize specific amounts of that revenue specifically for first responders, police, fire, nine-one-one dispatch, to create a retention and recruitment program, and use that as a base of start. And potentially, after eighteen months, we could review what thirty percent of the revenue put toward that goal would be. Or, and so I think revenue discussion would be something I'd like to have.
Okay. Ms. Farber.
Yeah, I'd like to see more information about the results from Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Waterloo, and Des Moines.
Okay.
That you had mentioned.
Okay. Any others? We're really crushed for time right now. Mike, I'm getting a sense that we could use, we'd like to further this discussion, but we'd like to be able to to have some more information to discuss about this. Is there a way we could make that an action item, a receive-and-file type thing, to be able to have on an agenda, or do we need to do that in another work session?
Sure. I mean, just the limited amount of information that's been asked for, which is basically what the other cities, their experience. I think we could collect that and get it to you. We probably have most of it already.
Mr. Resnick also mentioned, you know, crash data for the days that were that we looked at, or something similar, or in that similar window, something to that effect. And I think, am I right, Mr. Resnick, that that's something you would like to see if we do that?
Sure, we can get that.
Okay. If we could ask for that on the next agenda, is that something we can we can look for?
Well, we'll shoot for the next agenda. I won't promise that.
Understood.
We'll get we'll get you that, those two pieces of information.
Okay.
And bring it to you as soon as we have it. So if it's the next agenda, we'll bring it to you then.
Sounds good. So we're going to continue this discussion, just to make it really clear to everybody, no decision was made tonight. We don't intend to make a decision at our next next council meeting, for example, on whether or not to move forward with this. We're still gathering information and having a discussion about this. Okay. Well, we are at time, so thank you very much, chief. Thank you, Abhishek, Gus, and Justine, and everybody who was involved in this. We really appreciate this. There being no further business in the work session, we will stand adjourned.